Ready to go, men? Okay, let's go to the first order of business is the approval of minutes from last month. I get a motion to approve. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Okay. Let's move on to the first order of business here. ZV 5031, 800 Harry Driggers Boulevard. The applicant is requesting a variance to R4 Track PD Tech ZM 4680. Requirement of two parking spaces per residential unit and requesting 1.5 spaces per unit and height variance from 35 foot max height to 50 foot max height. Parcel ID 03-15739. Brian Hunt, Roberts Civil Engineering Agent for Bill Hale, Southern Land Partners owner. The public hearing was held on May 12th, 2022, and the BOA deferred the application to June 9th, 2022. Now, this is, so this is not a public hearing. This is, there's no public comment involved in this one.
That is correct.
Okay. All right, let's hear from staff on this matter.
Good morning. Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Again, this is ZV 5031, 800 Harry Driggers. This application was deferred for more information, and more information has been provided. There were some questions about the building height. It is 35 feet for this property, and they are requesting 50 foot for their max height. All right, so here is the requested information for the project. Site plan for the projected project, which was also in your packet.
This wasn't in the original packet?
No, it was in the packet for this meeting.
Mine's kind of small. Okay, is that it for you?
That's it. I also have Brian Hunt here as well. He can elaborate on the project as well.
Okay. All right, y'all got any questions for, no questions there? Okay. Thank you, sir. Maurice here for Mr. Hunt. Good to see you again, sir.
Thank you guys, thank you. Yes, this, it is a little small. I tried to, I essentially tried to show the, obviously, the location of the buildings. If you'll see that dark line that goes, the, the blue line is the property boundary. The darker line on the inside of that is the actual location of wetlands. We have a 50 foot buffer that is off from that wetlands. We have also, with this current layout, we are, we are probably 15 parking spots shy of being able to meet the two parking spaces per unit. I think that's, you know, as, as our original request, I think that the reduction of the one and a half, we could, we could find 15 parking spaces in this. We needed to make it work. The hard, the hard part on this, though, is that the, in order to make this development work or what the cost of the land is, the cost for development, they're going to have to be able to meet the density, which is 10 spaces, I mean, 10, 10 units per acre, which would put them roughly at 150 units. And the only way that they can get the 150 is to be able to go up. We need the ability to go up to another story that give them three stories in there. That is consistent with the other apartment complex that's on this, on this Harry Driggers. They are at a 55 foot height. We're looking for a 50. That's lower than the trees that are out there, but it is definitely, I think that's, this is going to be the make or break for this project. I know it's a big ask in going up an extra 15 foot, but understanding that there's, all the other land around this is already platted. It's going to be single-family homes, and there's a bunch of them coming for this road. That this last little portion, I think it's a great, a great place for a multifamily development. You'll have them on both ends of the Harry Driggers. And I think that this is, with a lot of work and consideration, we've done a lot of concepts. This is the best that we can come up with, I think, in order to maximize this, the use of this property. You'll see that there is a cul-de-sac that on that, the, the entrance road coming in is going to be an emergency access entrance. That, there is a road that ties in. You can barely see the cul-de-sac at that top left corner. That's going to be the main entrance. From that cul-de-sac, it then goes to a single-family development. That, I don't know the number of homes, it's over 200, that's going to be back there. And it's all gonna, yeah, I think that they're going to share that same road, same entrance, kind of the same look and feel, but it's going to be a multifamily instead of single-family.
So, the property you're talking about, the single-family, that's not developed yet?
No, sir, it's not developed, but it's already been platted. It's, it's, it's underway.
Nothing started out there?
Oh, no, sir, not yet. And this project in and of itself is probably, it would be a year, maybe a little bit longer before they're, they get developed as well. It's, you know, it's finding material and people to do it's been, been quite a struggle here in Glen County, which is a great thing for us, you know, especially as, as we develop and grow, but it is not a good thing for the people who are looking to have something built right away.
Okay, any, any questions?
Yeah, I got one. Brian, what was, I'm assuming this has been presented to the MPC? They've reviewed it prior to this, or?
The site plan? No, not on, so this hasn't, we have a redundant site plan on this. So this one, unlike the, the project before where we had a site plan that was perfectly fit within the, the zoning ordinance, and we fit all the setbacks and the buffers and the parking and, and such, when they wanted a reduction in the parking in order to conserve green space, same developer. This one, they need to, this, this is the only way that they can make this work. But, so as opposed to going through and spending money on engineering and the site plan process, and then come and ask if we can go higher and reduce the parking, this one, if we, if they can't go higher, there's, they can't, this project can't go forward.
We were just discussing it, and then my colleague had a, brought up a great point with the, the two asks that are presented here, the reduction in parking and the increase in height. I understand meeting the density and for it to be financially feasible, you've got to be able to get, units equal dollars, and it's a business, I get that. But, you know, his point was that we're asking for a reduction in the amount of parking and an increase in the amount of units. That seems to almost kind of contradict itself, so I'm.
So, so with this layout that we have, that is, this layout is showing the three stories, the number of parking spaces that would be required, required at 150 spaces, so, or 150 units. We're slightly shy of it. Again, you know, I think we're 15 shy of the 300, but is definitely, we can, we could come up with 15 spaces if we needed to on this. If there was no reduction in the parking, but yes, we could get the, the extra 15 feet so they can get that third story. But if that was a, if those were all two-story, then we're way over on our parking with this. If that makes sense.
What, what is the park, per unit ratio of the parking, the 15 unit? He says you got your 15 parking places short of the two spaces per unit requirement?
And that's with a maximum density of 150 units. Yes, sir.
So, so is, so is what you show there, does that work out to be one and a half spaces per unit?
No, that is, that is two spaces per unit at the 150 units. And we're like 15 shy.
So basically, if we do get, just saying, you know, if we did grant the increase in height and not the parking space reduction, you could potentially meet the, the two spaces per?
I think we could, yes.
What you're saying, this, this layout here is 15 spaces shy of having two spaces per unit?
For the 300, for the, for the 150 dwelling units, that would be allowed at the max density. So, yeah, so this site plan is showing what we're proposing, what we would like, which is a, 150 units. Those buildings are three stories, and the, the parking to meet those two spaces per unit minus 15 spaces.
All right. Right? Anybody else got a question?
What would the, you said there's another development in the area that has the 55 foot? Do we know, or this might be a question for staff? Do we have any details on when, when and how that one was approved?
Yeah, that was Walden Park at the time. Now it's the retreat over there right beside the church. Yeah, that one was approved back in the early 2000s. There was no variance for it, but it was built to that height of 55.
So that one was done through zoning and, or?
Correct.
zoning text, not a variance?
So that one wasn't, that one's a little strange because there was no variance. There was no conditions. It was just approved at that height and built at that height.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Well, I, sure, on my, I guess page 28 of my packet or page 11 of the zoning requirements, it calls for a 45 foot height. And I don't quite understand why where the 35 came from.
Yep, so the 45 foot height is for observation towers and such?
No, no, it says before, the building height is 45 foot and with the exception of the observation tower, which will be determined on an as-needed basis. So this is 45 foot, this states 45 foot for the building. So I don't understand where the 35 can come from.
Yeah, that's what we've always used for that zoning.
But this is the text for the, for the property?
Right. Yeah, but staff, we've always used that 35 foot limitation for that zoning text.
But the text says 45, I don't understand.
Right, but it also says 35 for residential structures.
I didn't see 35 anywhere. But I may have missed it. Okay. Any more questions for either one?
I just want to clarify that I understood what you said a few minutes ago.
Yes, sir.
When we spoke the last time, you won me over with the parking spaces vis a vis the green space.
Yes, sir.
What I understood you to say a few minutes ago is that we greenlight the height, and if we, if we greenlighted the height and then said, we, you can find 15 more parking spaces, would the project still go?
I think so. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I understood it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And, but again, you know, our position, again, our position is we would like the reduction in the parking just because I think their own, our own data shows that two spaces per unit is a little much for these type of developments that they're seeing across the, not only Georgia, but across the country where they've had these developments exactly like this. We would like the reduction in the parking spaces.
Yes.
That would give us an opportunity, if we needed, that if, again, as we said last time, if, if they have a need, that they're seeing that there's, there, these tenants now come with three cars per te, per unit, they could add on some additional parking. But our limitations are some of those wetlands, we can't get real close to it, even though it looks like, especially in that one area, we've got plenty of room to go by the time you add the buffers to it. There's not any space in there, so. But yes, sir, you're right. If, if, if we were, if we were to get approved with the height of the, of the 50 foot, that we could make it work with the parking, we'd like to use less. I mean, we, we ultimately want to conserve green space. With the heights, we're not conserving green space, it's just, that's just for adding density.
And, and just to clarify, and, and when we were chatting earlier, my point was that I was fortunate at some point to live in a four-story with the garage underneath, and, and a complex that also had the threes. And what I did notice was, from living there, that there was more of a parking need for the two buildings with four than there was with three. And so that's was, was kind of like, having lived it, that's what I was, was talking about in terms of if we just kept this parking and I had no issue with going up 50. So I just want to clarify. Thank you.
And we can make that work.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion? Okay. All right, well, anybody want to throw a motion out there? What are our motions? Could you put our?
Yes.
Motions up there? So it's all on the line?
I would move to approve ZV 5031 with condition, and the condition being, we do not, I don't know how we want to word it, but it would be, we allow for the 50 height, give the variance for the 50 foot height, but not parking space.
You'd rather have the asphalt than the green space? You'd rather have the asphalt than the green space?
Yeah, for those 15 spaces, I don't think that you're going to gain that much. You're going to lose that much green space as compared to when I saw the pictures of the other one.
I thought this, this was short 15 spaces of the two, what, how many, how many spaces difference would it be if you had the one and a half spaces per unit?
So currently, as it, as it was drawn, we'll just assume that all the spaces are there. That is, that is 300 parking spaces. With the, with the, the variance that we've asked for the height, we're asking for a reduction to 150 spaces. In all honesty, we're probably going to have some more spaces in there just because of the way the layout is of those buildings, where the other one was a little more linear, that we could add the parking spaces, it made it easier for those buildings, tenants to be close to a building that they could get to it. This one's a little more spread out like this, so essentially, I think we're going to probably have to add more than the one and a half spaces per unit. But we would like the option to be less than the, being required to do the two spaces per unit. If, where we end up at is probably going to be around 225, I would assume, is a good number for the parking on the, it's not the 150, but it's not the 300. So it does conserve the green space.
You're going to like 1.8 spaces per unit?
Yeah, that's right. I mean, we, we're going to be probably a little less than that. To put an actual number on it, I think this is, is tough right now just to be able to, to lay it out, but I think something of that nature would probably be more than adequate.
I can, yeah, I can, I can erase everything I said. I would feel okay with that one. It feels like it's an honest attempt to, to make it, to make it go, and I really appreciate that. So I, I'd make the motion to approve ZV 5031.
I'd make the motion to approve ZV 5031 as presented.
So we, we already have a motion that's been presented, so we have to act on that motion first, and then I guess you could vote it down, and then do another motion.
Oh, can I just say that the motion wasn't seconded, and I took it back? It was never seconded.
Okay.
I was just, I was just open, I was discussing it. I wasn't sure of the wordsmithing, and it was never seconded. That's why I said, I'll erase it all and start again?
Yes, sir, that'll work.
Okay. Yeah.
So you want, you want to make the motion to move to approve ZV 5031 with the condition of 1.8 spaces per unit?
Adding the 1.8, yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. All in favor? Got your motion? Turkey D, moving on down the road, we got variance request, which is a public hearing, ZV 5074 at 125 Zellwood Drive. Consider a request for a variance to the side setback required by the one-family residential, R12 district that applies to this property. The applicant wants to reduce the side yard setback to three and a half feet from seven feet. Parcel ID 02-00345, Charles and Helen Pace, owner and applicant. Can we hear from staff?
Yeah, Maurice Postal, Glen County Planning and Zoning here for Ms. Leaf, who wasn't able to make it to the meeting today. The applicant is requesting a variance to the side yard setback for an existing garage. The site is zoned R12, resident, one-family residential, and the side setback is seven feet. And the existing garage intrudes into that setback by about three and a half feet. On March 7th, Building Inspector John Farnsworth did an inspection of the property due to working without a permit, and Mr. Farnsworth found the two-bay garage and noted that it appeared to be within the setbacks. Then the next month, the applicant applied for a building permit, but a building department staff asked them to apply for a variance since the survey attached to the building permit application showed that the garage was in the setback. And this is the hardship stated in the application. Due to the existence and location of the concrete pad along the westerly property line, the shared fence between lots five and six, and the potential to encroach into existing septic system leach field, due to the design of the detached accessory garage that was affordable and available, its position and rotation is necessary in order to facilitate the opening of the doors as well as the potential to drive and park a vehicle temporarily on the exiting concrete for basic repairs. This is an overall survey of the property. This shows the dwelling unit here, and this is the garage up here in this corner of the property. And this is a close-up of the portion of the survey that shows the garage. This yellow line is the property line. The dashed red line is the seven-foot setback, and the greens is the garage, and it's about halfway through the setback, so three and a half feet. And this is a picture of the two-bay garage and the concrete pad. And this is the septic drain field, I'm supposing.
Sir?
Oh, I'm supposing this is septic drain field. And the property owners are here today, speak on the case.
All right, thanks, Maurice. Any questions for staff? All right, thank, thank you, sir. All right, applicant in the audience, I'd like to hear from the applicant regarding this matter. Step to the podium and give us your name.
Charles and Helen Pace, P-A-C-E.
Okay. So you want to give us, tell us what happened here? How you ended up with sitting in three and a half feet of setback? And plus, it looks like your driveway there is in a neighbor's yard.
What happened, that concrete slab that was there, was, was there when we bought the house, and it went right up to the fence, a couple inches from the fence. But there was no structure on it, so I guess that's why there was never a complaint made. But then I went to the building department and asked, and I was told seven feet. So then I want to put a garage there, and I measured from her fence, seven feet, to put that slab down, which is, it's jagged, there's a corner there, right, right at the green. But then, I, ignorance is no excuse, I know, but I went and had the slab put down, the seven feet from her fence. Then, find that I have to get a permit for it. I, this, this was my, my ignorance, and I'm so sorry for that, but I thought the seven feet then was what, what I had to do. Then, finding with, with, when I had to get a survey, found the peg in the back corner, top left, was not her fence, her fence was on the other side of it. So the peg, we found out, meant that the slab that I put on was not the seven feet, was seven feet from her fence, but not seven feet from the actual property line. And it's, it's like a long pie shape from the front of the property to the back where it's like four or five feet from the actual peg to her fence. And asked and was told that the fence, by, by Ms. Ingrid, that the fence was, was right. And then find, pardon?
The person that we bought the property, they told us the fence was property.
Get over the microphone, I can't hear you.
Said the person that we buy the property from, he told us that, you know, the fence was a property line. And we never have a survey before that, you know?
You not get a survey?
We never, no.
So you didn't get a survey when you bought the property?
Correct, we not.
Okay.
Huh.
I don't know what to say.
Okay. Any, any questions for the applicant?
Well, excuse me, we did not follow the slab that was there because I, I measured the seven feet and told the people we had to lay the slab, that it's got to be offset from the sled, the slab that was, the front slab that was there.
So you, you poured the slab where the garage sits now, plus the additional concrete down the right side?
Yeah, but the green is, is where we poured the slab. But that's seven feet from her fence. But now, finding out, and my mistake, that it's not seven feet from the property line. It's only like three and a half or something like that, from, from the real property line, which we went by the fence and not the surveyed line.
What, the, the company that, did you install the garage, or did you contract through a company?
We had it put up by a place called Carports, Carolina.
Okay, Carolina Carports?
Carolina Carport, yes.
And the reason I ask that is I've dealt with that particular company before on a personal project on my own property. And when I went through the process in all of my paperwork and on their website, it was very clear that any state and local permitting was up to the homeowner. That was in the documents I had to sign before they would come onto it, that, that was my responsibility to, to check and see whether it was needed or not. Excuse me. So that, that was the reason I bring that up, because I have recently dealt with that company.
Sir, if I can bring you back to the slab again, please. I thought you said that, well, could you tell me again, make sure that I, maybe I didn't hear it correctly? What part of that slab was there when you bought the house?
The front part where it says existing, existing concrete slab, that was there. A big slab that, with a previous owner was building, uh, light, ultra-light planes there.
Right.
But he did not have, he did not have a building on it, it was just that slab. So I put the garage behind that slab, and, and, and to the, you know, I left seven feet of dirt between the slab and the fence going back. But that slab, I never broke it up or took it off. It had been there, the front part, where it says existing concrete slab. That was there.
I understand that. You're throwing me off when you say about this, I'm, I'm not sure when you say the seven foot. My impression is that slab was there, and you added, as it says there, you added that, that little piece to the right?
Yes.
So that the garage could fit there?
If I can go back there, please, to?
What's that?
Can I, can I go to indicate with my finger something? Because it's really not that clear.
I see what he's saying here. I see what he's saying here, that the garage had no concrete up underneath it.
Right, this, all this right here.
At one time.
There was no concrete under the green portion, correct?
Right.
Is that what, okay.
Oh.
Oh, I see. Can I do?
So, so the garage slab was added, as well as the addition to the right existing slab, right there?
Correct, correct, yeah.
How, how did I lose that?
You mess it up. Go back.
How do I get back to what?
Right there. Yeah, this is what we, we, right here, we put new cement right there.
Can I?
And a little bit right here. Yeah, he was right.
No, no. Pardon me, what, the slab, the old slab ran this also. That green was the old slab down to this corner.
Yeah, you can see like that line right there.
This was the old slab there.
I see it.
We, we had our slab built from here, here, there, 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 to there. Like I said, this was the old slab to there. So then we added this section here. Yeah, we added, we're, we added that section over on the right that's white and the zigzag of the green out there. Not, not all that green was what we laid. We laid, as I indicated, that one.
And when you put down that new green slab, you saying now you, you measured it seven feet from the fence?
From here, yeah, from the fence, from there to the slab that we laid, that was seven, that's seven feet all the way from here to her fence. And then from here to her fence, that's, that's the seven feet. But not this slab that was already there, that was already up to her fence. But we just added this section here. About seven feet from her fence, what we, what we had poured. If, if I could please go up there, I'm messing up with this thing. If I could please indicate with my finger. If I could please indicate with my finger.
Mr. Chairman, is that, the slab that was there before, when they bought the house, was that illegal?
Yes. It's beyond the property line. I mean, the slab can be beyond the setback, but not beyond the property line. And that slab right there, it looks like to me, it's about a foot beyond the property line at the front.
The front part of it does, yeah.
So, that's got to go anyway. Okay, any more questions for the applicant?
I have one. How, why didn't you obtain a building permit for this project?
Because I didn't think I needed one. I, I'm, I'm that, it's my fault, I, I don't, there's no excuse for it. I guess I should have, I went to the building department and asked them about putting a slab there, but I didn't, they didn't say, you've got to get a permit to do that or anything, I just thought that, seven feet from her fence, that's where the cement's going.
So you didn't, you didn't ask them about, you didn't tell them about that you were going to put a building on it?
No. I just asked, well, yeah, I said, I'm going to put cement there, and I want to know, you know, what's the legal boundaries, how work can I, you know, put this up for a garage?
So they gave, they gave you the seven-foot setback line?
They told me seven feet.
And that, and that was it? They didn't, they didn't tell you that?
They didn't say do this, or do that, or anything.
You, you just asked about what the setback line was?
Yes.
Okay.
I got it. I'm done.
Okay. All right, thanks, sir. Does anybody have a question? Do you have something to say? Give your name, what you'd like to do.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Ingrid Metz, and I have resided at 123 Zowa Drive, next door to this property, for forty-six years. Having studied the assessment of lot number six, which belongs to Mr. and Mrs. Pace, by their surveyor, Peter Durand of Durand Land Surveying, Inc., I cannot support approval for the variance for this property. This is the original surveying form that was given to me, and it shows my property and their property line much bigger than that. Excuse me? Yes, this was their survey that they handed to me when they came over to request that I either see the land to them and say it's okay, or pay $400 for the property that they were encroaching on, or they would file a variance. Those were the three options they gave me. So I consulted with my children and various other people that I know, and lawyers, and they said, no, you sign nothing. So I told them I would not sign anything. I don't have any ill will toward my neighbors. I realized, didn't know that, I've been there for forty-six years, and the previous owner, the very first owner, Jerry Garrett, who laid the cement slab, he was my neighbor for thirty-plus years, and he decided to do cement slab so he could build an airplane. And he had a temporary building on the slab. And I even told him, since it was temporary and I didn't like it, I'd go and knock it down myself. But what is of interest, that on this surveying plot here, there is an area chart, which states my lot, number five, has twenty thousand two hundred and fifty-three square feet, and four hundred and thirteen square feet of it is on their lot, number six. So therefore, that's the reason why you have that pie shape going back, and I own four point eight feet back there, and then two feet along the property line. But then, what happened was, that unfortunately, the survey that they had to do in order to get the permit arose a conundrum. Because the original owner, who was my neighbor for thirty-plus years, as I said, laid the cement plat in 2006, so he could have for his airplane. The second owner, a young man, in 2010, around that time, built a stockade fence, abutting my original fence, my chain link fence that had been laid forty-six years ago. Because it's a complete square, rather than going off in a pie shape distance in order to enclose our property, they just did a square shape. Now, I was in Virginia at the time when my ex-husband purchased the land and got the house, and he put the fence up, and had the fence company put the fence. So everybody assumed that that was our property line. And then, they, he didn't know that that stockade fence, which abuts, I mean, there's no space in between, it's right up to my chain link fence, he did not realize that that was on my property line. And consequently, the metal building for the garage is not seven feet from my property line as dictated in the code. And I was amazed at the size of this building. If it had been a little shed, just like, I didn't complain about the cement pad, didn't complain about the fence, because the young man who built the fence was hiding cars and boats and all kinds of junk that he had, that he was working on. But then when I saw this huge building, abutting almost close to my fence, I was kind of concerned. Now, I wouldn't have said anything unless the neighbor on the other side was concerned that they were going to put in a septic, so that they could connect it to a camper, so people could live in it, or when visitors came, they could stay there. And that is what started the ball rolling, because she was concerned about the camper, which was parked by her side of the property, and wanted to know if that was legal. And that's when I called code enforcement. And I told them, and she read me all the longness of code enforcement, that you cannot have anybody living on a camper in your property since we're zoned for residential. Then I mentioned the building, and I said, it's huge. And I said, it looks like it's really close to my fence. So the code enforcement officer said, they have a permit. I said, I don't know. So she looked it up on the computer, and she says, they do not have a permit. So this is what started the ball rolling. That's why I didn't complain about this little cement pad that my neighbor did for his airplane, that's why I didn't complain about the stockade fence, because it hid the ugliness of the junk that was in the backyard when the other owner had it. So therefore, because of this close proximity, and you can see it from my backyard, it looks like this, it's really tall, it's taller than their house, I feel that this might be an impediment when I or my children, when I pass, decide to sell my property. And I just feel that, I realize, you know, that this is something that, if it had just been a little shed for lawn mowers and all that other stuff, it could have passed. But this is huge, and I can see it from my kitchen window. And unfortunately, you know, I wasn't told that this was going to be the structure that they were building, because I couldn't understand why they needed to be, and at eleven o'clock at night, they're still laying and pouring cement and making noise, and I just was wondering what was happening, because I had been there for forty-six years and never heard a peep from that side of the house. So this is, this is what is my concern, and I thank you for taking my concern into consideration when you make a decision.
I do have one question. The survey that you have there in your hand, is that the same as-built survey that we were provided, or is that a separate one?
Well, it's probably a smaller copy, but this is larger, but it also entails the area chart, which tells-
It's the same, okay.
The number of square feet.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're looking at the same.
And it's signed by the Peter Durand.
Yeah, okay, perfect, thank you.
So, and so I, I mean, I was going to say, okay, fine, but then, when I consulted with my children and other people, they said, you're going to have a hard time when you sell your property, because I'm going to have to explain to them. And I'm paying taxes on the twenty thousand two hundred and fifty-three square feet. And four hundred and thirteen of it on the other side of my fence, which is on their property, and that's where all the confusion began. That's what that yellow, I'm assuming, this is what the survey, I, this is what the surveyor says on his area chart, but I'm, I don't know, because I'm not a surveyor, whatever, but I'm just assuming that that pie shape, I mean, it's odd, and I'm sure that when the people laid out the fence, they weren't going to go at an angle to enclose our property, so they just made a big square. And, and that caused confusion, but like I said, being there for forty-six years, the neighbor until 2006 didn't lay that pad for his temporary airplane building. And it was vinyl and whatever, it wasn't a metal structure or anything like that, so unfortunately, when he passed, it came down. And then a young man moved in and put used cars and stuff like that, and he, and for me, he decided, so that would block my view, he made the stockade fence. And it, and it's odd, from the street, we start off square, but then as it approaches onto their property, and that's where the problem lies. If the property owners, the Paces, had made the survey first, before they, when they bought the house, they would have realized that, and then two, they would have gotten building permit. But it all seems to have gone backwards. We go from the building, to the permit, to the survey, and this is the conundrum we're in. But I, as the property owner next door, I feel that this might be an impediment when I later sell my house, or my children have to take care of it, and then have to go through legal processing, and yada, yada, yada.
So?
Yes, I realize that, but it's not, but according to the code enforcement person, the reason why they say seven feet is because of fire, so that the police or the fire people can go around the building. Access, correct. And, and yes, I realize that I'll still be able to see it, but it's very close. And, and it's huge.
So, so technically, you really have the right to take that wooden fence down?
Yes, it's my fence.
Because it's on your property?
Correct.
Even though somebody else built it?
Correct. That's what the lawyer told me. It's my fence.
It is her fence, so realistically, she could take that fence down and put up another fence right on the property line, or within an inch or two of, of the line, so she doesn't encroach over the line.
Right. And Massachusetts is six inches, I don't know what it's here.
But yes, there is a slab there that is going to prevent that.
In the front corner.
In the front, in the front corner. Well?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
What is the dimensions of that building?
I have the...
Maurice, do we have that?
I imagine it's the...
Six, twelve.
It could be twelve feet, it could, uh, it's better twelve feet than the floor.
So, the eve height is twelve feet?
Yeah.
Okay. It look, it looks like about six feet. I, I didn't get a chance to go look at this project. Is that, is that, all that tree growth back there on the left side of this project, is that thick growth?
Do you have, do, do you have the, you have a picture from your side of the fence?
So, forgive me for being stupid here. I'm, I'm looking at this picture here with the fence, looks like it's making a right angle in front of this building, is that, I didn't get a chance to go look at this property, so I'm, I'm kind of blind here at this. Okay, thank you. Never mind.
Six feet or so past the front of my building, it was just after cement, standing out there. We didn't hire, we didn't wait, we just added, do that one thing. Oh, yeah, now I remember it. Because then they had that odd door on the side of the house, that angle right there.
We, we, we understand it now.
Although I sympathize with the situation you're in, not knowing is not an excuse, and we do have to look at these individually, and what led- we do have to look at these individually, and what led up to the situation of what they're at, but I'm not on board with this one, so I'd like to make a motion that we deny ZV 5074.
I'll second.
Or American?
Yeah, I'll talk to them after the meeting about that.
Okay.